We now call this September Board Meeting of the Union County Board of Educational Order. We're going to be led in a pledge of allegiance by Vice Chairman Helms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for approval of agenda. All in favor? We are now at our public comments section. Public comments guidelines. Up to sixty minutes have been allocated for public comments at each regular board meeting. The board does not respond to public comments, though members may ask the chairman to request clarification. Priority to speak is given to district residents, parents, students, and employees. Speakers must be present when called or forfeit their opportunity. Only individuals who have signed up may speak. Time may not be transferred or shared. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will not hear in open session one complaints about the performance of school personnel, personnel issues, confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, members of the UCSPS cabinet staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Cabinet staff members are seated at the table to my left. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.17, any individual who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting may be directed to leave by the presiding officer, in this case, I, the chairman. Failure to comply with such a directive may result in removal from the meeting and could constitute a Class II misdemeanor. Please be advised that any member of the public engaging in such conduct will be removed from the meeting. Continued disruptive behavior may result in a review of eligibility to attend future meetings. And our public citizens that are going to speak today, first up is Christian Velasquez. When you start, your three minutes start.
Good evening. I'm here before you all today to address the board of education policy signed back into effect on August 5th. This board of education policy is causing school nutrition to have to take meals from students whose negative balance exceeds approximately $20 and instead provide them with an alternate meal. This creates excess food waste and calls for school nutrition services, as well as a potential loss of revenue due to public backlash from this policy. Should this policy be held up through the year, these costs and losses could quite easily exceed the widely-publicized $300,000 lunch debt. However, the most important and concerning issue at hand is the shame, embarrassment, and harm that this policy will cause for our children. As hard as this caf in the cafeterias may try, the shame in having your food taken from you and being given a lesser meal is unavoidable, if the student even takes the alternate meal, as many refuse. The children are bearing the shame of an issue that society should be handling. It is very easy to say that their guardians should just send money or just apply for free lunch, but I do not think that many people understand the financial gymnastics at hand for countless families in this area. For a family of five to qualify for free or reduced meals, their income would need to be just shy of $70,000 annually. This would include any potential income earned by a child working after school. In a county where the average rent for a three-bedroom home is about $2,000 per month, this is not much. This family's additional monthly costs, such as insurance, utilities, retirement, groceries, and car expenses, would be an additional $3,400. Combined on an annual level, that would be about $65,000 per year. Now, if this family does earn that $70,000 threshold, you would see that they have nothing left to even try to pay for their child's lunch debt without them being shamed. These working parents are often the people teaching, driving, and feeding our children. These are not imaginary families. They are real people, and you all see them even if you don't realize it. Now, while I understand that no sector of public education is funded to the level it should be, I would be remiss to not compare this debt to both a per-student amount and in comparison to the district's funding allocation. When broken down per student, this debt is roughly $7.30 per child. That is less than the cost of two lunches. When compared to the federal, state, and local allocations that were approved at the November 12, 2024 UCSPS budget resolution, this debt is only 0.066% of that allocation, far below even 1%. Anyone who has ever worked with a PNO or any budgeting knows this is a minuscule variance. In closing, school meals are a resource to our children that have proven to assist in learning, growth, and overall behavioral development, a resource well worth that 0.066%. These children deserve that resource free of shame. I encourage you all as board members to do the right thing and not shame our students over something that they cannot control. If you need further convincing, I invite you all to come to the cafeterias and see the reactions on our children's faces when we have to enforce this policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jerry Simpson.
Chairman Vincent, members of the board, Superintendent Houlihan. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening regarding representatives of scouting America sharing opportunities in scouting with the student population. Scouting has changed a great deal since I was a scout, and equally, America has changed. I certainly don't have to tell you that, as you have been given a tremendous responsibility in caring for our youth, ensuring their access to excellent educational opportunities, and helping them grow into successful adults. The world today is faster-paced, and kids are exposed to a constant barrage of information and influences through TV, the internet, and social media. This information is often less than age-appropriate and can even be sinister in some circumstances. These influences often cause kids to struggle with who they are, their place in the world around them, and how to establish direction and purpose. When joining scouting, each member is required to learn the Scout Oath. It is a constant reminder that as a scout, you endeavor to become more civic-minded, more service-minded, healthy, clear-headed, ethical, and moral. Numerous independent studies have been conducted over the years and across the world measuring the impacts of scouting on an individual's academic performance, mental health, and overall well-being. One such study published in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health researched the influence of the scout movement as a free-time option on improving academic performance, self-esteem, and social skills in adolescents. I quote from the study, "Continuous changes in society generate the need to manage non-formal areas of learning as an extension, enrichment, and alternative to traditional forms of teaching, understanding that learning and human development not only occur in formal contexts but extend to an entire socioculture network of non-formal and informal learning." Another similar study concluded that the scouting influence not only improved the mental health of adolescents but had lasting impacts well into middle age. I'm sure the recent event in Minneapolis has been in your thoughts. A tragic incident, a waste of innocent life, trauma and anguish by survivors and the community, all a senseless act by a confused young individual. What would one day, twenty minutes, and a glimpse into scouting have meant to that individual in Minnesota? Could scouting have changed the direction of his life? I know that every moment of the school day is precious, as is the lives of our children. I do hope you will see the impact scouting can have on making each moment more productive and allow a few minutes for students to hear scouting story. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Baxter Stegall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. My name is Baxter Stegall. I am the district chair, which is the top volunteer that helps support scouting in Union and Anson Counties. I grew up in Union County. I'm a Marshville native originally, grew up in Monroe, and I'm a product of scouting here in Union County. I earned my Eagle Scout Award from a troop here in town, which was over at the Methodist Church. And I'd use that leadership skills later in life in a number of different ways. I'm a combat veteran. I then served as a police officer and detective, and following later as a criminal prosecutor. I moved back home a few years ago, and I work in the family business for my father Danny and my grandfather Mr. Jimmy. Some of y'all may know them. I wanted to speak to you briefly about the values of scouting, the sort of things that this program can provide for our youth. The main things that scouting endeavors to teach, character development, leadership, citizenship, and a love and appreciation for the outdoors. These are all very valuable skills and personality traits that I hope all of our youth can learn. Fall, certainly is the beginning of the school year. It's also the start of our program year. And it is the time when we do our most heavy recruiting to get young folks into the program and continue on. And I wanted to come here tonight and thank this board and the school system for its partnership with us. We have a number of schools where we do, we have certain periods of time where we're participating in some recruiting events. I wanted to come and thank you guys for that opportunity. And I want to look forward and welcome the future growth and expansion of that partnership. This is a very important program for America's youth. We hear all the time, you know, kids are growing up, and many people don't see some have the same values as they did in the past. Well, here's a program that is still endeavoring to help instill those values in America's youth, and it is a good program, and I want to thank you guys for the partnership. Also, I want to invite every member here, any member of the audience, who would like to come to our Eagle Scout Board of Review. It's the first Thursday of the month, and it will be this coming Thursday at the VFW Hall and Indian Trail, so that you guys can personally see and speak to our Eagle Scout candidates and the young leaders that we're growing to help, and who will be in all of these seats, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, to help move our community forward. So I wanted to take a moment to thank you and thank the administration of the school system for our partnership and our opportunities.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Reagan Shaw.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Reagan Shaw, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Union County branch of the NAACP. Anti-racist curricula is an educational imperative, not just for students, not just for staff. It's needed here in this room because sadly, the apple rots from the top. Consider recent UCSPS history. In 2020, Board Member Travis Keiker posted an online image celebrating black people being relegated to hard labor. A screenshot published in the Charlotte Observer showed the chairwoman of the board, Melissa Merrill, had clicked the like button on this racist image. Then, Board Member Gary Sides also made the local news by posting an image demeaning to Mexicans. Neither Sides nor Merrill were held to account. After this embarrassing string of incidents, the board spent over $1 million on diversity consultants to clean up its image. The consultancy created a Citizens Advisory Committee from our county, mostly comprised of people of color. They recommended hiring a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. A year later, the scandal had passed. You did not hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. You dissolved the Citizens Advisory Committee. Then Gary Sides, the same man who demeaned Mexicans, ushered in a new classroom policy that banned anti-bullying materials, such as this Dr. King poster. This is a defiant act against the Citizen Advisory Committee's recommendation to improve school culture and climate for marginalized communities. Ms. Morris threaded the legal needle for Gary by saying that any materials on the walls needed to be curriculum-related. What does that mean for a poster like this in a math classroom? Pick any math classroom of any grade and tell us if you would allow this poster. You refuse to answer this question. You can't even give us a coherent answer as to who is in charge of ultimately deciding. The obfuscation is by design, because this policy is a dog whistle. You know it, and we know it. Let us remind you, the Department of Public Instruction emphasizes integrating values such as respect, kindness, integrity, and justice into all classrooms. Meanwhile, racist incidents multiply. This past year, many of our black students received texts telling them to go back to the plantation and pick cotton. Is it a coincidence this is happening at the same time you order our teachers to take down anti-bullying posters in our classrooms? No, you sent a message. Then you welcomed the Jewish Federation to provide direct mandatory training for teachers on antisemitism. Good, but why wasn't the NAACP ever offered the same opportunity? You know we have the materials. For 116 years, the NAACP has been a force for equality. Please respectfully announce our partnership loudly and proudly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gardner Payne. Gardner Payne.
Good afternoon. My name is Gardner Payne. My wife Nicole and I live in Marvin with our three children, who all go into Marvin Middle or Marvin High School. I'm here with Sarah Van Gundy, who's the president of, I'm also the president of Marvin Booster Club. I'm here with Sarah Van Gundy, who's the president of the Weddington Booster Club, along with representatives of her booster club. And we are also here on behalf of Ann Divers, who's the president of the Cuddy Booster Club, but is unable to be here tonight because of some athletic conflicts at her school. We're here today to continue the process that Weddington started a little over a year ago, and that is to seek permission or to ask you folks to allow us to raise private dollars to expand on our existing strength and conditioning facilities. Now, there's a lot of different reasons why this is needed, but given our time constraints, I'll just briefly talk on two. And that's from a health and safety standpoint and also from an equity standpoint. Now, from a health and safety standpoint, you know, Marvin has almost a thousand student athletes, perhaps the largest number of student athletes of any school in the state, and Weddington and Cuddy are close behind. But in order to service all of our student athletes, our weight rooms are filled to capacity with equipment packed and tied together and weights scattered to meet demand. The spaces are in constant use from early in the morning to late at night, with students often waiting for equipment access either in the room or out in the hallway. These wait times create unsafe conditions, and accidents are more likely in the current environment. This is really just a ticking time bomb. It's not whether, if, some catastrophic injury is going to happen to one of our student athletes. It's just a matter of when, given the demands placed in those facilities. Now, secondly, this is an appropriate project on an equity basis. Again, we have a thousand student athletes. Our school was built to house 750 students. There's other schools in our county that have a third or less of the number of student athletes, but our student athletes are forced to use a facility the same size as theirs. By allowing us to raise private dollars at no expense to the taxpayers at all, we're able to increase the size of our facilities, which in essence gives our student body the opportunity to use a facility that meets our demands, just as other schools in this county currently have facilities to meet their demand as it stands right now. I know you folks set equity as a bar for many projects. This puts an equity, as far as strength and addition goes, across county lines. Now, this is a process that we, the three of us have been working together for a year now. We've met with our community leaders and business leaders and parents and administrators, local elected officials, and we're all in agreement that these are pertinent projects that need to get done. We also know eventually this will wind its way back up to you folks. In the coming days, our administration will start the paperwork process to begin those steps. We hope that you will look at this project with open ears and see the need for this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We had a situation where someone wanted to get on, but whatever the case may be with technology, this is an individual that speaks regularly at our meetings. But this is a one and one, you're good? All right.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted you to know that we consider that. Okay. All right. Let us, motion for approval of the minutes from August 5th and August 20th.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Motion for approval of the consent agenda? All in favor? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. It is hard to believe that we are quickly wrapping up week two of the new school year. And while we are still working to get through a few of the back-to-school kinks, I wouldn't say that we are very pleased with the start so far. Our operational teams and school staff have done an amazing job. I've visited more than fifteen schools since the first day, and I've seen outstanding quality teaching and learning happening even from day one. I want to give a big shout out to our school leaders, our staff, our students, and our families for their hard work and for starting the year off in a positive manner. Also, as you're going to hear next, the State Board of Education met yesterday to discuss the state's accountability results. We're looking forward to sharing our presentation soon, and as you will see, we have some historical data points to share with the board and our public. I want to say a big thank you to our families, our students, and our staff for just an outstanding job academically last year. And finally, I would like to say that for many years, UCSPS has participated in a week called Start with Hello. This week is a, this year's campaign will be from September 15th to 19th. Our student support team has developed a list of activities in schools. We'll share that information with parents and staff. For members, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Wow. That was pretty short tonight. All right. Next on the agenda is the 2025 UCSPS Accountability Update.
Yep, I'll do it. Yeah, so as I mentioned yesterday, the State Board of North Carolina met to receive the state accountability results. We are pleased tonight to share with you all the district's accountability results. Joining us at the podium today is Dr. Jonathan Tyson, who is our Chief of School Performance, as well as Dr. Matt Slider, who is our Director of Research and Evaluation. Dr. Slider will give the majority of the presentation, and both will be available for questions at the end. So, Dr. Tyson, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening, Board of Education. The data for the state of North Carolina has been made public, and as you have seen on the news, there has been some celebrations. But tonight is our time, right? And it is going to be quite a celebration. I'll just be quite candid. Dr. Slider is here. He's our Director of Research and Accountability. Also, keep in mind, this data, of course, is not embargoed. However, it will be fully certified in October, and at that time, you will receive a, really, a data report, which will be comprehensive. It's a board briefing that we provide every year, and it will come in early October. I think it is fair for us to say that every member of Team UCSPS has a celebration with the data that we're going to present tonight. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Slider, and then we'll be available for questions at the end.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Houlihan, Ms. Morris, thank you for the opportunity to present these data to you all. Like Dr. Houlihan and Dr. Tyson said, I think you will be well pleased. There's a link on the screen which goes to the DPI website, which has spreadsheets containing all the data that I'll share with you tonight for both UCSPS and every school across the state. That includes data for all North Carolina schools, including proficiency rates, growth data, school performance grades, and all the data pieces that you hear from me tonight are live on that site. General preview of the presentation that I'll do. We'll start with a brief presentation of the accountability model. We'll jump into some of the data with regard to academic results. We'll talk about school performance grades. I'll jump to some non-accountability performance indicators, and that includes the impact of our intensive tutoring. And then we'll wrap up with key accomplishments and our next steps. So to start with, just a general overview of the accountability model. This slide shows you all of the assessments that are administered at the different levels at the schools. On the left-hand side are the elementary and middle schools with regard to EOGs, EOCs, and other assessments that are administered. On the right-hand side is the list of assessments that are administered at our high school. These all come together to calculate school performance grades, which I'll go over shortly. With regard to end-of-course tests and end-of-grade tests, there are two ways that the state calculates what they consider proficiency, and I'll refer to these two regularly throughout the rest of the presentation. The first one is grade-level proficiency, or GLP. That is the percentage of students who score on EOGs and EOCs at level three and higher. That is kids who have sufficient command of the subject matter. Those data points are used for calculating accountability measures for the state, such as school performance grades, and those data are also reported on North Carolina's school report cards. The second calculation of proficiency that the state does is called Career and College Readiness, or CCR. That is the percentage of kids who score level four and higher on EOGs and EOCs. That is a measure that suggests that the students are on track to be college and career-ready after graduation. Those data are also more used for federal accountability reporting. However, they are included as well on North Carolina's school report cards. Jumping into the actual data and our academic results. This is a chart that shows our overall EOG and EOC proficiency. UCSPS compared to North Carolina as a state. You can see there, we've got five years' worth of data there. The bottom row is our 24-25 proficiency. Our GLP, or grade-level proficient, number 70.7, which is a 1.2 percentage point increase from the previous year and a 7.7 percentage point increase from the 2021 school year. This slide is just another way of showing you these data to show the increase in our overall proficiency since the 2021 school year. And if you look at that number on the far right above the blue column, 70.7, again, that's our overall EOG and EOC proficiency, and that number is number one in the state of North Carolina.
So just to say that a little bit differently, we've taken a lot of pride in the last ten years of saying that we're proud of Union County Public Schools being the highest-performing large district in the state. And I said this morning, it sounds way a lot better to say that Union County Public Schools is the highest district in the state without the large district part of it. So congratulations to all of our team.
From there, I'll jump into academic results for our elementary schools. You can see on the left side there, we have reading data over multiple years for third, fourth, and fifth grade. On the bottom row, again, is our proficiency rates for each grade level and subject. Third grade reading was relatively flat compared to the previous year. But if you look at fourth and fifth grade reading, in particular, fourth grade reading, up 3.8 percentage points from the previous year and 9.6 percentage points from our proficiency back in the 2021 school year. Elementary data for math following that, third, fourth, and fifth grade. All three of those areas of proficiency increased from the previous school year. If you look particularly at fifth grade math, you'll see our proficiency there, 79.2, up 2.2 percentage points from the previous school year and 14.4 percentage points from the 2021 school year. The far right-hand column shows our science proficiency at fifth grade. The science tests with regard to fifth- Uh, the science tests with, uh, with regard to fifth grade, eighth grade and biology at the high school. Those are all new tests. They were renormed by the state, uh, meaning the academics department at DPI created new standards for teaching. The accountability department then at DPI created new assessments to assess those standards. And typically, when we, uh, provide new assessments to kids, we don't typically compare to previous data points from previous school years. However, if you look at that, 78.8% of our fifth graders scored as proficient on a brand-new science assessment, uh, based on brand-new rigorous science standards. Jumping ahead to middle schools. Uh, again, I'll, I'll start on the right-hand side there and just mention the science, uh, EOG at grade eight, which again was new, like fifth grade. Uh, 72.5% of our eighth graders scored as proficient on a brand-new eighth-grade science EOG, measuring those similar rigorous standards. Uh, looking back to reading and math, if you look at reading for sixth grade, uh, our overall proficiency at the, uh, for the 24-25 school year, 65.9% was one full percentage point greater than the prior year and 5.1 percentage points higher than the 2021 school year. Uh, I'll give an example for math. Sixth, seventh and eighth grade were all up from the prior year. If you look at eighth-grade math, 4.5 percentage point increase from the previous year and a 15.9% increase from the 2021 school year. We saw a lot of gains in our middle schools. High school data, these are data for the four EOCs that we administer at the high school level. Uh, you'll see there, NC Math 1 EOC, our proficiency was 52.6, equal to the prior year. Uh, however, that number is 8.1 percentage points higher than it was back in 2021. The next column is NC Math 3 EOC at the high school level. Our proficiency there was 82.7%, which is 9.1 percentage points higher than the prior year and 16.8 percentage points higher than the 2021 school year. I will point out, I think somebody on the board asked last year about the difference between the Math 1 score here and the Math 3 score here. There are a lot of kids in the district who take NC Math 1 in middle school. And I'll, I'll get to their proficiency later. Uh, those kids' scores are not included in these data at all. This is just the kids who are taking NC Math 1 at the high school level and it excludes all of those kids who have already taken it at the middle school level. That explains why the difference there between those two scores. Our English 2 proficiency at the high school are relatively flat compared to the prior year. English 2 is an interesting metric at the high school. It is literally the one area where we did not see a significant drop in proficiency from COVID. So if you look, uh, at the data across years, you'll see a relatively consistent pattern for our English 2 scores. On the far right-hand column is the Biology EOC at the high school. Again, a brand-new test. We had 61.8% of our high schoolers who took Biology score as proficient on the Biology EOC, which was brand-new. Some additional indicators at the high school level that are included in our accountability model. Uh, the first one there is the ACT Work Keys Assessment. That assessment is a career or job-oriented assessment that we administer to all of our CTE concentrators, uh, Career and Technical Education concentrators. See there, our score there was relatively flat compared to previous years at 68 point, uh, 68.0%. The middle column there is Math Course Rigor. That is the percentage of kids who take and pass NC Math 3 at the high school level. Our scores there are consistently high, 97% of kids taking and passing. The cohort graduation rate on the right-hand side, that is the percentage of kids who started ninth grade during the 21-22 school year and completed high school within four years to graduate in either June or July of 2025. Our CGR cohort graduation rate there, 93.2% consistently high as it has been in previous years. The only remaining additional high school indicator is the ACT, which we administer to all of our 11th graders. My apologies, this requires a little bit of explanation, uh, because the state over the years has changed what they view as proficient. Some years, they have viewed a composite score greater than or equal to 17 as proficient. Other years, they have viewed a composite greater than or equal to 19 as proficient. So I want to walk you through the data basically for each year. Back during the 2021 school year, the composite score of 17 or higher was the, uh, ballpark we were aiming for on, on the ACT. We had 69.1% of our kids score as proficient. The following year, they changed the proficiency target to 19. So that drop in scores made it difficult for us to determine whether or not the, the decrease was due to the proficiency target increasing or due to student performance. We had a few additional years there with the target at 19 and saw some increase in student proficiency. This past year, 24-25, they changed the proficiency target back to 17. We ended the year with 71.5% of our kids scoring as proficient on the ACT, according to the state. The question then was, is that increase from 60.4 to 71.5, how much of that is due to them lowering what they consider proficient? And how much was due to student progress? So what I did, and these are not accountability data. These are my calculations, which I put, which is why I put them in parentheses. Uh, these are the percentage of kids who would have been considered proficient during those interim years. And when you look at that, you can see a pattern of steadily, steadily increasing proficiency that has resulted in 71.5% of our 11th graders being considered college-ready on a nationally standardized assessment. Jumping into school performance grades. Just a general overview of the formula for school performance grades. The formula takes into account proficiency of the school at 80% and growth at the school at 20%. A little bit more detail. Grade level proficiency is looked at with regard to EOGs and EOCs. Again, that's the percentage of kids that score at achievement level three and higher. And we also look at whatever the proficiency rate is for those additional accountability indicators at the high school level. Those two things are combined to calculate the proficiency composite, which again is used as, as 80% of the formula for school performance grades. The growth composite at 20% is calculated based on EVOS growth. EVOS stands for the Education Value Added Assess, Assessment System. It's calculated by a company called SAS, uh, in Cary, North Carolina. And it's basically an indication of the rate that students have learned over the previous school year. The standard that we look for for growth is a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time. Based on those calculations, schools are given a designation of either the school exceeded expected growth, met expected growth, or did not meet expected growth. So looking at our growth results on the bottom row there, you can see 43 out of our 50 schools, or 86% of schools, either met or exceeded growth. And we only had seven out of our 50 schools, or 14% of schools, that did not meet expected growth. And those results are generally similar to the data from the prior year. Breaking down those data a little bit farther, you see that 93% of our elementary schools on the left-hand side met or exceeded growth. In the middle, 67% of our middle schools exceeded or met growth. And on the right-hand side, 82% of our high schools did not, uh, met or exceeded, uh, uh, growth. School performance grades. The 23-24 school year, we saw 42 out of our 50 schools receive a school performance grade of an A, a B, or a C. And we had eight schools that had a school performance grade of a D or an F. For the 24-25 school year, we have 45 out of our 50 schools, or 90% of schools, receive a school performance grade of A, B, or C. We had five schools that received a school performance grade of D or F. And my apologies, that chart is a little, uh, confusing there because those five schools, uh, were all schools that received a school performance grade of a D. We had no schools that received a school performance grade of F.
So we're honored this evening, uh, to have a group of principals with us that we would like to publicly acknowledge for their hard work and leadership. These are principals whose staff last year led their schools out of low-performing status. Uh, I'll begin with Ms. Amanda Stinchcomb from Benton Heights Elementary School.
Stand to be recognized.
Uh, next, we're going to have two recognitions, uh, one from the prior principal and one from the current principal. So John DeLucia and Jamelle McGee from Parkwood Middle School. Congratulations. And finally, our reigning Principal of the Year from Sun Valley Middle School, Brian Patience. Congratulations. One additional point I'll make about Sun Valley. They also, correct me if I'm wrong, had the highest growth index of any school in the state of North Carolina. So congratulations. Thank you all for being here and we look forward to honoring your staff and your students tomorrow. Dr. Slider?
Thank you. Just a little clarification of those data there. Uh, 93% of our elementary schools had a school performance grade of A, B, or C. 78% of our middle schools and 91% of our high schools. Back in the 21-22 school year, we had 13 schools that were considered low-performing. One of the areas from last year's presentation, each year prior to that. Uh, one of the areas for intervention was for us to decrease the number of schools that are considered low-performing. For the 24-25 school year, that number is five schools considered low-performing. We have a number of non-accountability performance indicators. These fall outside the realm of accountability from DPI. Uh, but these are data points that we like talking about each year, uh, to reflect so positively on our schools and to brag. Uh, one of them is, uh, Career and Technical Education, or CTE, credentials earned. Uh, our kids earned 13,259 CTE credentials this past year. These are certifications that are issued by professional associations that are geared towards skills that are required by students for employment and advancement in a career. That number, 13,259, is 32% higher than the number for the 2021 school year.
One other data point I'll point out on this one. As a reminder, for the last four years, UCS, uh, has been the only district in North Carolina that has been in the top three of this category in terms of the most credentials earned. So, big shout-out to our, uh, career development coordinators, our, our high school teachers, our CTE teachers, uh, to Brian Davis and his team who do an exceptional job.
The next slide shows our, the number of AP exams taken by the students in the district. Uh, for the 24-25 school year, we had 8,083 AP exams taken by our students. That is a 52% increase from the 2021 school year. I said the exact same thing to you all last year. When we see such a drastic increase in the number of AP exams taken, normally, we would see a decrease in the passing rate because at some point, we're starting to have kids take AP exams that are too challenging for them. Uh, that is not the case in UCS. Last year, we had a pass rate on those AP exams at 80%.
So one comment on this, uh, I, I can't explain how this keeps getting higher and higher. Uh, but to have a 80% pass rate on that number of AP exams is unheard of. Uh, and just to preview what could be coming ahead. Uh, we do believe that that 8,000 could potentially get over 10,000 for the current school year. My point is that on college and career readiness, um, I really feel like we're doing a phenomenal job compared to many districts in the state and the nation in preparing our kids for what their future could be on both the career side and/or college side. So, thank you again to our high school teams and our, our school counselors in particular.
Looking at the complete opposite end from, uh, high schools, our K-2 early reading proficiency data. You have, uh, on the left-hand side there in blue, our kindergarten data. In the middle, in green, is our first grade. And on the right, in purple, is our second grade. These are changes in proficiency from beginning of the year to end of the year with regard to early reading assessments. The bars on here represent the Union County Public Schools data. The lines represent the state data. And you can see our growth is consistent with state growth. However, our numbers are considerably higher than the numbers statewide. Basically, looking at these data, we see end-of-year K-2 read, early reading proficiency data at or approaching 80% of our kids. Next couple of slides will be on the impact of our academic tutoring. These data are for our second-grade reading tutoring. On the left-hand side in blue, you see gains from beginning of the year to end of the year for our Title I schools that have a second-grade intensive reading tutoring program. On the right-hand side in green, you see those same gains at schools that do not have a second-grade intensive tutoring program. Those schools gained proficiency at 6.0 percentage point increase, which is wonderful. Uh, but it's only half of the gains, 12.1%, that we saw at the schools that do have that reading, intensive reading tutoring model. The next slide shows similar results for our fourth grade and seventh grade math tutoring. Fourth grade is on the left in blue. And we saw from the 21-22 school year up to the previous school year, we saw a 9.8 percentage point gain over those years. On the right-hand side in green for seventh grade, we saw an 11.1 percentage point gain for our schools that have an intensive tutoring program. Starting to wrap up, some key accomplishments to summarize. We had 90% of our schools earn a school performance grade of an A, B, or C. That was an increase from last school year at 84% and a considerable increase from the 21-22 school year when we were at 74%. We had 86% of our schools meet or exceed expected growth, which was generally consistent with the previous school year. We had early reading proficiency data that is consistently well above state levels at or approaching 80% of our students as proficient. And we had some non-accountability data points at the highest levels in UCS history, including the total number of CTE, CTE exam, uh, credentials earned and AP exams taken and the pass rate. The next slide is a list of areas that we may not have gone up considerably from the previous year, but we wanted them in the presentation as areas of sustained or maintained areas of high level of academic performance. And it is a relatively long list. Our four-year cohort graduation rate at 93.2%. Our ACT proficiency at 71%. I'm not going to read all the numbers. What we've got, our reading EOG proficiency and our math proficiency in there. I mentioned earlier about our kids who take the NC Math 1 EOC at the middle school level. Out of those kids, their proficiency is 98.4%. Our overall science EOG proficiency at 75.5%. And I'll remind again, those were all brand-new tests based on rigorous, uh, standards by the state and we excelled in that area as well. Our overall EOG proficiency at 71.3 and our overall EOC proficiency at 68.8. We like to do two types of comparisons for our UCS data. The first one is in comparison to- The first one is in comparison to the twelve largest districts in the state. And there's a very long list here of areas that we scored as number one. All four EOCs at the high school and the all EOCs combined indicator. The all reading EOGs combined, all math EOGs combined, all science EOGs combined, and the all EOGs combined. The indicator that pulls together all EOGs and EOCs combined. That's that overall indicator where we were number one in the state overall. The ACT proficiency, the combined ACT and Workhees proficiency indicator, our four-year graduation rate, our five-year graduation rate, our English learner progress, which is an indicator that tells us what percentage of our English learners are making appropriate progress with regard to learning the English language. Uh, math course rigor, uh, I'd mentioned that earlier, our percentage of kids taking and passing math three. That's a little bit of a wacky one. We tie, uh, with six other large districts across the state because the state, uh, only reve, uh, releases data that are that high, uh, for schools that, districts that are greater than ninety-five percent. The other way we can, like to compare ourselves is in comparison to the state as a whole. Uh, this is a list of areas where we were number one in the state overall. Math grade four EOG performance with regard to grade-level proficiency. Again, that's percentage of kids scoring level three and above. Fifth-grade math EOG at GLP. Sixth-grade math EOG for college and career readiness, kids scoring level four and above. Seventh-grade math EOGs GLP and CCR. The all math EOGs combined indicator, the all EOGs combined indicator, the all EOGs and EOCs combined indicator. And math course rigor, we tied with seventy-five other LEAs at number one. Overall, quite a long list of accomplishments for the district. Our next steps, uh, we will continue to focus on academic performance in order to increase the proficiency on EOGs and EOCs district-wide. We will decrease the number of schools that did not, that did, that fell in the category of did not meet expected growth. We will further decrease the number of schools identified as low-performing. We will continue the district's turnaround plan for the schools that have been identified by UCS leadership as focus schools. That plan is already in progress. And we will continue the district's focus on, focus on increasing academic quality is particularly in the areas of literacy and science. Thank you all. That was the end of the presentation. I appreciate your time.
All right. So any questions from the group?
Dr. Tyson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for the presentation, um, tonight. Um, I have two questions.
Okay.
Focusing on our low-performing schools, uh, which have done well in spite of what, um, has been identified as low-performing because teachers work extremely hard, um, in those classrooms. The first question is, what are we doing to build the morale at our schools, at these low-performing schools? What, what are we doing to help?
Yeah, so that's.
Build their confidence?
Sorry. Very good question. We, uh, met with our, uh, principals today after the general principals meeting that would be engaged in this focus school work. Uh, and we spent, uh, quite a bit of time talking about culture and culture building. And we have some programming that, uh, uh, that really Dr. Jones and his team is putting in place with Ms. Giddens, uh, and working with professional development to build the culture in those schools. Uh, because ultimately, we know that when we have a strong culture, uh, students do better. And that's a focus of, uh, our focus school work.
Can, can you say that one more time, that last part about the culture?
Right.
Can you say that one more time?
When we have a strong culture in our schools, our students do better.
Okay. My second question and my last question, what are some of the challenges that we can acknowledge and identify that play a factor in low per, low performing schools?
Well, you know, I, I don't like to consider any schools low-performing. Uh, we like to see them on a rise. And I would just say that.
Well, let, let me re, let me restate the question. Okay, because the reason I say that is because the stars identified as low-performing. And I know that, as I said a few moments ago, that they work extremely hard.
Right.
So since the grading system has identified them as low-performing or challenging, what are some challenges that play a part in schools with our students that causes them to be identified as low-performing?
Well, I think there's many factors and many reasons. I think we've talked about consistent staffing, and I think the board has worked with us to, uh, provide consistent staffing at some of our schools. I think we've strategized with our human resources department, uh, to try to, you know, build and, and grow capacity in those schools, uh, so we can provide the best possible education for all of our students.
Got you. So the answer, and this is not a loaded question by any means, not trying to put you on the spot. Um, but I think one of the challenges that community needs to, uh, be made aware of, if they do not know, that these schools that are dealing with are being identified, these teachers in these schools are being mom and dad. Uh, they're being social workers, they are being cafeteria workers outside of the normal lunchtime. They're being counselors, uh, they're working to de-escalate behaviors. And so when we look at these schools, and some would say, oh, this school is a D school, uh, they, they may not can learn or what have you. I think it's important that we understand that these teachers are doing double and triple duty to make sure that these students, uh, even though the academic piece is so important, some of them are working so hard just to create an environment for these kids to feel loved and appreciated. So I'm asking that question because I, and I want the, I know because I've worked in the school system. But I just want these teachers and these principals to know that your work is not overlooked. Uh, and, and I am confident that as they are continuously striving and, and climbing up the ladder for success, that these results do not mean that your students and you are not doing a good job. It, it can, it can really weigh on you when you are doing all you can to, uh, be effective. You don't go into education for lights, camera, or action. You go into education because you have a love for students and for people. And so I wanna celebrate District One schools, teachers, and administrators for the hard work that they have done. And I want to encourage them to keep on doing what they're doing. And I believe that community is going to hear the need, see the need, hear the cry of helping to support them so that these D schools by next year will move to C schools. So again, it was not a loaded question.
No, I, and, and.
By any means.
I didn't take it that way, but when you look at the slide, it says that we're number one in North Carolina in overall proficiency, it's all of our schools.
Absolutely.
It's all of our schools. It's all of our students.
I'm very aware of that. But what I'm saying is, that may be the case. But I'm looking at this and I'm looking, and I'm speaking to the challenges that these teachers have and these students have just to live. Some of them are trying to live every day. And when we see these things, I know what we identify as being number one, we have a lot of schools who don't even deal with these challenges. But I'm speaking specifically to District One schools who have been identified as low-performing. And I just wanna encourage them and get the community to get more involved in supporting the work so that we will be number one, not just on paper, not just academically, but socially. Because you said it, when strong cultures are presented in our schools, our students do well.
True.
Anyone else have questions? Or Dr. Tyson?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tyson. Awesome. Ms. Morris?
Uh, yes, good evening, members of the Board of Education. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Um, there are six policies for review on the agenda today. Um, I will try and answer any questions on any of them, if anyone has any.
Questions?
Thank you.
Board, uh, comments?
I don't have, like, just a, I actually had a question because I, and I was gonna ask, um, Dr. Tyson. Um, with the opening of our updated facilities, how, have we gotten any, like, feedback from the community or anything or the students? Like, I know it's been like just, what, two weeks now that they've been in school, Forest Hills and, uh, East and everything. Have we gotten any feedback, like, what, how they like it or what's going on? You know, just kinda curious. I haven't had a chance to go visit. I've been busy with work, so just curious.
Yes.
I'll, I'll start. I'll just say that both, um, the, the new buildings at Forest Hills High School and East Elementary are absolutely amazing. Uh, I've visited both schools already. Uh, the students there are in heaven. They love it. Uh, if you have not had a chance to go to either one, I would strongly encourage you to. Uh, the, the amenities of both schools, the alignment of academic programming is fabulous. Um, I will say the one thing that we have to continuously work out would be traffic patterns. You know, during arrival and dismissal, that's gonna be a significant issue, especially at East because we're still under construction with the parking. Um, that's really been some major feedback that we've been dealing with. Um, but other than those, in terms of the facilities themselves and what's happening on, on those properties is absolutely amazing. Anything else?
Yeah, I would just say that, uh, teaching and learning, uh, was going on on day one. I mean, it was new, of course, uh, but quickly, uh, the students were in the routine. Of course, they were wide-eyed and enjoying the facilities. And of course, you know, thank you to everyone that was at the ribbon cuttings and had a hand and, of course, securing the money to build the schools in those communities. I, I do think it was a, uh, you know, uh, an overdue need. Uh, and our students in those communities are gonna benefit for that for a long time. So, yeah, but it was great. I would say traffic, and of course, the high school kids, they were a little nervous on day one and day two, trying to figure out, hey, where are my classes, just like any other school? So, uh, but I do think we had a really strong opening. And I do think our school leaders in those buildings really prepared well leading up into the opening and had, you know, uh, a lot of communication that was going out to the communities. And, uh, we were ready to go. So it was a very positive start at those schools, but I wanna say a very positive start at all of our schools.
Was that it, Ms. Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how it landed, what the, uh, what the feel was out in, um, in, uh, that, you know, that part of the county. I'm on a different part of the county, so I just, and I know how it went over there and busy, but I just wanted to know how, when I could get a chance to go through with it.
All right. Any addition? Anybody else? Board comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, at our last board meeting, uh, you asked me to create because of, uh, a desire. And, uh, I'm gonna read it individually. This does not speak for the board. But this is the sentiments of my heart. And I'm hoping that when we, uh, continue with this conversation, that it will be a part of, our, um, not declaration, but, um, our response to what we see. Uh, whereas public education is the foundation of a strong, equitable, and thriving society, it is the constitutional duty of the state of North Carolina to provide every child with access to a sound, basic education. And whereas recent budgetary decisions have significantly reduced funding for public schools, resorting in widespread cuts to teacher salaries, classroom resources, student services, and vital school support staff. And whereas underdefining public education undermines the ability of faculty, staff, and administration to perform at their full potential, directly impacting the quality of education that our children receive. And whereas the diversion of public funds to private and charter institutions, many of which are not held to the same standards of transparency, accountability, or inclusivity, threatens the very existence and stability of schools, of public schools that serve the majority of North Carolina children. And whereas while we acknowledge that some funds will inevitably be directed toward private and charter institutions, it is imperative that public schools receive equal and sufficient support as they remain the primary and most inclusive vehicle for preparing standards to succeed in a diverse and democratic society. And whereas public schools un, uniquely expose children to people of all backgrounds, cultures, and perspectives, equipping them to think critically, to embrace diversity, and to reject narrow or closed-minded ideologies. And whereas teachers are entrusted with the critical responsibility of preparing students for future success and meaningful careers. And it is unjust that many educators struggle financially while care, carrying out this calling. And whereas educators deserve a salary that allows them to live with dignity, stability, and security, free from financial hardship as they dedicate their lives to ensuring that students are equipped to thrive academically, socially, and economically. And whereas educators across our state are underpaid, overburdened, and increasingly unsupported, leading to alarming rates of teacher burnout, turnover, and shortages, especially in rural and underserved communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Jamal Kirkpatrick the Fourth, unequivocally exposes all efforts to defund or diminish public education in the state of North Carolina. Be it further resolved that I affirm the necess, the necessity of public schools as the backbone of equitable education and demand that even amidst funding allocations to private and charter schools, public schools must be supported fairly, fully, and without compromise. Be it further resolved that I stand in full support of our educators, faculty, and staff and demand fair, equitable, and adequate funding to ensure that they have the resources, salaries, and compensation needed to meet the growing academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. Educators are pouring, building, and equipping our present and future. Be it finally resolved that I call upon state legislators, community leaders, and citizens to prioritize investment in public schools, restore funding to appropriate levels, and protect the future of public education from any attempt to shift resources toward private and charter schools at the expense of the public good.
Anybody else have any comments? We thank, uh, Reverend Kirkpatrick for his, uh, board, uh, comments. And the, what Reverend Kirkpatrick read was on his behalf and his behalf alone. Uh, we, um, we have that, uh, uh, resolution that he designed, and it will be looked at, uh, and at a future, uh, time. But, uh, I just wanna go on record and say thank you to those in the presentation tonight. Uh, Union County Public Schools have something truly indeed to be, uh, proud of, to be number one in the state. And as Dr. Tyson indicated, that's every one of our schools. From the east to the west, the north to the south, uh, those teachers and students and faculty members and custodial workers and all those in between contribute to the success of our great school district. And it is indeed an honor and a pleasure to be able to serve this great board along with these great board members, each and every one, uh, of them. Announcements?
Policy will meet September sixteenth at eight AM.
The Strategic Planning, Information Technology, and Transportation Committee meeting will meet September twenty-fourth at eight AM.
Facilities will also meet September twenty-fourth at nine AM, and curriculum will follow at ten AM.
Finance will meet September twenty-third at eight AM via Zoom.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Here are none. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Say aye.